Again, I apologize for the flags, but they're here now, so we'll go ahead and begin. First, I'd like to welcome Reverend Scott Mower, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Alfred Award, who will lead us in this invocation.
Hard to hear me, Father. We're indeed grateful for this opportunity we have to meet here as citizens of the city of Milton, and grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy. We're grateful to be here for this council meeting. We're thankful for the opportunity as citizens to have the freedoms of speech and joy and the opportunity to have the freedom of choice and to do those things with a government that makes it possible to have organization and boundaries around the things that we do as citizens. We're grateful for those, Father. We're so thankful for this beautiful weather that we've had during this fall time and the beautiful leaves. We're grateful for the moisture that's been upon us to fill the reservoirs and to be able to provide the necessary nourishment to the plants and the trees and flowers around. We're so thankful, Father, for our council members and the time that they spend on our behalf, and we ask that thou would bless them as they review the different topics that they'll cover today and throughout their time, that they will be blessed to have, to make good decisions on behalf of the citizens of Milton. Father, we're thankful for all that we do have. We're grateful for this wonderful country that we live in. We're grateful for all the many blessings that thou has provided us with, and pray during this special season, as we get into the holiday season, that we'll have a change of heart, that we'll love our neighbors and those around us, and have greater community, focus, and effort as we go forth. Again, we thank thee for the many blessings that we enjoy, and this we humbly pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council Monday, November 2, 2009, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for this November 2, 2009, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, we do request that you complete a public comment card prior to speaking on that item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards were received by city clerk staff prior to the meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you'll have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey. Councilmember Zoner Bailey is not present. She has asked that I read this statement for the record, sir. Councilperson Julie Zoner Bailey cannot be here this evening due to a required teaching course she must attend. Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Tina Diaversa?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tard. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Tard is not here this evening. He asked that I read this statement. Regrettably, I have a mandatory travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, this week to attend a Food Safety and Defense Conference. I wish the mayor, council, and staff a productive meeting.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure and an honor, and if you would help me, please welcome the Sons of the American Revolution, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance tonight. [Inaudible] Mark time. All rise. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the front. Come on. Three. Oh. Dismissed. Also want to welcome and tell you how excited we are to have all our families and our citizens here tonight, so thank you for being here. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 09963. Staff recommends the following changes to tonight's agenda. First, we'd like to add, as an emergency item to new business, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certification for extension of existing service delivery strategy. And secondly, we would like to add an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, is there any other items we need to consider? Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Diaversa. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or the first presentation from the public or from the council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must fill out a public, a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. The city clerk, do we have any public comment?
No public comment, sir.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Clerk, please sound the items.
Item number one is approval of the October 12, 2009 work session minutes, Agenda Item Number 09964. Item number two is approval of the October 19, 2009, regular meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 09965. Item number three is approval of the execution of the contract with the Kelly Group to provide Parks and Recreation Consulting Services for the city of Milton, Agenda Item Number 09966.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, let's move on to reports and presentations. City clerk, please sound the next item.
Our first presentation is a Veterans Day proclamation. Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Tonight, we have here with us color guard from Piedmont Chapter, the Sons of the American Revolution, and it's significant in that this organization recognizes veterans from the Revolutionary War. Tonight, we'll read a proclamation commemorating Veterans Day here in the United States. Whereas it has long been our custom to commemorate November 11, the anniversary of the ending of World War I, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas in the intervening years, the United States has been involved in several other great military conflicts, which have added billions of veterans, living and dead, to the honor rolls of this nation. And whereas the Congress passed a concurrent resolution on June 4, 1926, calling for the observance of November 11 with appropriate ceremonies, and later provided in an act approved May 13, 1938, that the 11th of November should be a legal holiday and should be known as Armistice Day. And whereas, in order to expand the significance of that commemoration, in order that a grateful nation might pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars, who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation, the Congress, by an act approved June 1, 1954, changed the name of the holiday to Veterans Day. Now, therefore, I, Joe Lockwood, Mayor of the city of Milton, do hereby call upon all of our citizens to observe Wednesday, November 11, 2009, as Veterans Day. On that day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace, so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. I also direct the appropriate officials of the government to arrange for the display of the flag of the United States on all public buildings on Veterans Day, in witness where he has hereunto set his hand and caused to seal the city of Milton to be affixed on this second day of November, 2009.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank our scouts for being here, too.
Also want to take just a moment and recognize someone here on our council. I'm sure most of you have, driving up to City Hall, have seen the white crosses out along the street, and those are in honor of the memory of our veterans. And I want to thank Councilmember Lusk for not only his idea, but he personally is the one that's been putting those up and making them and painting them, and I've seen them in the back of his warehouse at his shop. He's back there himself, putting those together, and like I say, he spearheaded that whole project, so I want to thank all our veterans here tonight, and also thank Councilmember Lusk for doing that. So certainly a great and a great thing to do, and we're real proud, so thank you, Councilmember Lusk.
Thank you.
Okay, the city clerk will sound the next item.
Item number two is a proclamation declaring November 2009 as Family Month. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
We sure do.
Any families want to come on up? We're more than mayor. You guys can come on this side, too, so.
Sure. Whereas, the city of Milton, Georgia recognizes the family as the fundamental unit of society and an essential part of the culture, social, and spiritual fabric that comprises our communities. And whereas, throughout Milton, Georgia's history, families have been the foundation of our society and a source of stability and love for every generation. And whereas, strong families teach children to live moral lives and help pass down the values that define a caring society. Families provide children with the encouragement, support, and love they need to become confident, compassionate, and successful members of society. And whereas, upholding the timeless values that have sustained our social order throughout history will result in the enhancement of health and security of Milton, Georgia's families, and whereas, spending more time together, spending family time together facilitates the development of positive and open relationships between parents and children. These relationships help parents encourage their children to make positive choices now. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the city of Milton, hereby dedicate and proclaim the month of November 2009 as Family Month in Milton, Georgia, and encourage all citizens of Milton to spend quality time with family members to strengthen relationships between parents and children, given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the second day of November, 2009. Thank you very much for being here. [Applause]
Mayor, as a representative of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Milton, we want you to know that we accept and support this proclamation. We're grateful for the family unity, and we know that our city will benefit as families grow together more and more, so to have the opportunity to have the families recognized during the month of November, we believe, will be a great benefit to all those who choose to do some activities with their families. In fact, as these handouts have been given, on the back of them, there's some suggestive items that might be beneficial for the first week of November to have dinner with your family, if you haven't done that for a while. During the second week, potentially having a family member, maybe a community member or neighbor, come over and have dinner with your family. The third week, going in possibly donating to North Fulton Community Charities or one of the charities of your choice. And then the last week, which is going to be Thanksgiving week, is to have the opportunity to spend that with your family and friends and to enjoy that wonderful week of Thanksgiving. So on behalf of the citizens of Milton, we really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll take a picture with council, but council's going to have to kneel down in front. Sure. I'm thinking, where's Lisa? You might want to get back there if you can get everybody.
More than mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
No, you can stand.
I don't want to block you.
If it was ready, I'd take a copy of all of you. One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here and your support.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to first presentations.
Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
We have one item under first presentation. I'll read that for the record. It's approval of an ordinance establishing solid waste collection services within the city of Milton, provided for the scope and nature of the operation, providing for the disposal of garbage, solid waste, and refuse, requiring the execution by service providers of a non-exclusive agreement with the city of Milton, providing for a non-exclusive agreement with the city of Milton, providing procedures for the handling of complaints, providing for an infrastructure maintenance fee, requiring indemnity insurance, providing for revocation and amendment, prohibiting assignment and subletting without consent, providing for forfeiture, and making other provisions. This is Item Number 09967.
I'm sorry, do I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the first presentation of Agenda Item Number 09967.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Thurman.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, I'm going to move on to our first public hearing. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Approval of a resolution continuing the wired and wireless enhanced 911 charge and establishing a concurrent enhanced 911 charge on voice-over IP for such communications within the city of Milton. Mr. Matt Marietta?
Good evening. Much like the first presentation, this is an annual renewal that we do for the 911 fee that goes to fund our emergency public safety answering point for police and fire service. We also have added on a voice-over Internet protocol addendum to that, so the voice-over Internet protocol, VoIP telephone lines are also charged that same fee for residences within the city limits.
Okay, is there any questions for Mayor Matt?
No other changes other than the voice-over IP.
I can tell you, just so that it is a matter, it goes on the record, what these funds are used for is to fund our 911 dispatch center. Very stringent on how these dollars can be spent, and that's how we do spend ours, is with the functioning and the agreement we have with the city of Alfreda for dispatch center.
Will there be public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on this. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Before you do that, Councilmember, what we're doing with this one is it requires a public hearing 10 days before actual adoption, so you won't see this again. This was the public hearing that's required by law. You'll see it again in an upcoming agenda. You don't need to take any action tonight.
There's no zoning agenda or items on unfinished business. Moving on to new business, will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Approval of an amendment of Resolution Number 0910106, a resolution appointing members to the city of Milton Design Review Board by adding a board member for District 5. Agenda Item Number 09968. Councilmember Tina Diaversa.
Thank you, ma'am. It's my honor to be able to appoint Morty Ralapoli to the Design Review Board. The person that's currently sat in that position on District 5 has been unable to make meetings to schedule changes, and so we're making a change in that position. Morty is obviously a resident of the city of Milton and lives in Cricket Creek subdivision. He's a PhD, he has a PhD in information security from Stevens Institute of Technology, an MS in computer information systems, and a BS in electronics and communications engineering. His governmental experience includes having served on the Police Professional Ethics Review Board on Longmont City Council in Colorado as a member in 2003 and 2004, and he served as a board member on the Community Development Block Grant Program, board on Longmont City Council in 2002 to 2003. He told me that his goal was to stay involved in Milton local government affairs and to contribute positively to the local issues that impact our communities, so I believe he's going to be an excellent addition to the Design Review Board. He currently works with IBM Corporation, and among some of his other professional contributions, he's been a speaker with the National Security Agency of the United States, invited speaker on many issues with regard to security and information architecture, with regard to computer security. He's written and co-authored several books, as well as presented papers on information technology, and is just a very, very well-rounded individual. I could go on and on with his background as it pertains to his education and his professional credentials, but suffice to say, he's very well-equipped to be able to serve on our Design Review Board, and I think we're going to be well-served with him being on that board. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor and thank Mr. Ralapoli for coming forward to serve on the Design Review Board.
Do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of an amendment of Resolution Number 0910106, a resolution appointing members of the, excuse me, members to the city of Milton Design Review Board by adding Mr. Morty Ralapoli as board member for District 5.
Second the motion.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
In just a minute, I'm going to ask Morty to step up, and I'll give him his oath, but first, I'd like to make sure staff has his home phone number. I didn't want to say this until after he was ratified, but now, anytime that there's a complaint about anything with the design of a building, if our citizens could call Morty, get home. I'm kidding. Morning, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will faithfully perform the duties of Design Review Board member
I will faithfully perform the duties of Design Review Board member
of the city
of the city
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof
as well as the Constitution
as well as the Constitution
and laws of the state of Georgia
laws of the state of Georgia
and of the United States of America
and of the United States of America.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to not only thank Morty, but also all of our other volunteers. And again, I want to not only thank Morty, but also all of our other volunteers. That's what makes things special about the city of Milton, where our citizens can get involved and make a positive impact, so thank you for your upcoming time. We certainly appreciate it. Yep, I think your first meeting is tomorrow, right? Okay, will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Approval of amendment of Resolution Number 0910107, a resolution to create a stakeholder advisory committee for the city of Milton Transportation Plan by adding a member for District 5. This is Agenda Item Number 09969. Councilmember Diaversa?
Thank you, ma'am. It's my honor to appoint Ms. Julie Lynn Pinkney to our TSAT Committee, our Transportation Advisory Committee. Julie has served on our TARA Committee, which was a short-term committee that didn't continue long-term. Once their objectives were met, they dissolved that committee, and she's asked me to continue to be involved in the city, and we're thrilled to have her. She's very dedicated. She works with Chardis Insurance, a division of the company that was formerly named IAG, I'm sorry, AIG. She's currently also a member of Milton Groves Green. She's on the local school council at the city of, at the Alfreda High School. She was also a local school council member at Hopewell Middle School, a member of the PTA, a volunteer with her daughter's Girl Scout troop, and also a volunteer for the Leukemia Society. In addition to serving on the local school council, she's been a congressman- That's what makes things special about the city of Milton, where our citizens can get involved and make a positive impact. So thank you for your upcoming time. We certainly appreciate it. Yep, I think your first meeting is tomorrow, right? Okay, well, City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Approval of amendment of resolution number 0910107, a resolution to create a stakeholder advisory committee for the city of Milton Transportation Plan by adding a member for District Five. This is agenda item number 09969. Councilmember Diaversa?
Thank you, ma'am. It's my honor to appoint Ms. Julie Lynn Pinkney to our TSAC Committee, our Transportation Advisory Committee. Julie has served on our TARA Committee, which was a short-term committee that didn't continue long-term. Once their objectives were met, they dissolved that committee, and she's asked me to continue to be involved in the city, and we're thrilled to have her. She's very dedicated. She works with Chardis Insurance, a division of the company that was formerly named IAG, I'm sorry, AIG. She's currently also a member of Milton Groves Green. She's on the local school council at the city of, at the Alpharetta High School. She was also a local school council member at Hopewell Middle School, a member of the PTA, a volunteer with her daughter's Girl Scout troop, and also a volunteer for the Leukemia Society. In addition to serving on the local school council, she's been a congressman, Sanford-Bishop Campaign Committee. She's worked with diversity and ethical leadership through her company, and a member of Big Brothers' Big Sisters program, and she's also a math tutor. She has a degree in finance, and that's what her role is with the Chardis Insurance. She has an ethical leadership certification and diversity training. She and her daughter Juanita and her husband, Mr. Barr, are here with us this evening, and we welcome you guys, and it's my honor to appoint, to ask the council to approve the appointment of Julie Pinkney to the TSAC Committee.
Okay. Do I have a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of an amendment of resolution number 0910107, a resolution to create a stakeholder advisory committee for the city of Milton Transportation Plan by adding Ms. Julie Pinkney as committee member for District Five.
I'll second that.
The motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. Now I'll be honored to give you the oath of office if you'll step forward. Hewitt, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and confirm...
I do solemnly swear and confirm...
...that I will faithfully perform the duties of...
I will faithfully perform the duties of...
...the stakeholder advisory committee member...
Stakeholder advisory committee member?
...of the city...
Of the city...
...and I will support and defend the charter thereof...
And I will support and defend the charter thereof...
...as well as the Constitution...
As well as the Constitution...
...and laws of the state of Georgia...
And laws of the state of Georgia...
...and of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Again, going back to Morty and Julie, thank you for your time and efforts, and you'll make a positive impact in the city of Milton, so we're glad to have you helping us out. Will City Clerk please sound the next item?
Next is approval of a resolution for the supplemental lease agreement with Georgia Municipal Association for Police Vehicle Purchase. This is item number 09970. Stacy Inglass?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, as a resolution for the adoption of authorizing a supplemental lease agreement in the amount of $20,500 for the purchase of a Ford Explorer for the police chief, and as our fleet ages, vehicles have to go out of service more and more often for repairs and maintenance, and there's a need for spare vehicles for this. Well, right now, we currently have a full staff, and there aren't any spare vehicles to be had, so our police chief has actually been driving her own personal vehicle to and from work and on the job to have a spare vehicle in the police department. So what we're requesting that you do is approve the resolution so that we can purchase a Ford Explorer for the police chief. We're doing it through a capital lease to basically manage our cash flow, to make sure that we have enough cash flow to maintain general operations. The rate that we've been quoted by the Georgia Municipal Association is 3.9%, and that will have an annual payment of around $7,200. So staff recommends or requests that you approve this resolution tonight.
Okay, does the council have any questions for Ms. Inglass on this item? Okay, do you have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number 09-970, approval of a resolution for supplemental lease agreement with the Georgia Municipal Association for Police Vehicle Purchase.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Diaversa. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Added by motion and vote is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certification for extension of existing service delivery strategy. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, I want to make one clarification, which is clearly my error, that both Ken and I were both trying to send this item to Jeanette earlier today, and the one that I sent through said it's allowing the mayor to authorize this document, and Ken's document, which superseded mine because I believe it to be probably more legal, says the resolution is to authorize me to sign it regardless, it doesn't matter who signs this particular document, both will suffice, we just need to get this document in. Going to our service delivery strategy, and we've had those discussions at previous meetings, this is more a formality of the city of Milton, just requesting an extension. We will likely join with several other cities in Fulton County that at least adopt this resolution to prove that several of us are in agreement with an extension to the deadline, which happened to be October the 31st. Again, I don't think that there's any reason to think that we will be granted that extension because of the jurisdictions that have already signed resolutions opposing an extension, but more just in a show of solidarity amongst a majority of cities in Fulton County, we believe it's appropriate to at least be on record to say that we certainly would have supported an extension if it had been granted or a possibility by the entire county. So I don't want you to think that by us approving this tonight that we will in effect have an extension. This is more just something we need to do to demonstrate publicly where we stand with respect to the service delivery strategy. By adopting this resolution, you give me the authority to sign that and at least transmit it so that we are on that record.
Okay. Any questions from council? Do I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve a resolution of the city of Milton authorizing the city manager to submit to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs a certificate seeking an extension of the existing Service Delivery Strategy Act agreement.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Diaversa and seconded by Councilmember Hewitt to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a certification for extension of existing service delivery strategy. Any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. I'm gonna move on to, first to council reports. Do I have any council members that would like to make a report tonight? Okay. I'll move on to our staff reports.
I was gonna go real quick tonight. Short meeting. Mayor and Council, I don't have a lot in the way of a staff report tonight. We've met many of you, we've met individually within the last week, which I wanted to do to bring you up to speed, some of the things that we're working on day-to-day with the operations of the city. I don't think that anything rises to a level that I need to make any type of a public statement as to what's going on. So absent any questions, I'll certainly answer them if you have them. We do have some issues that we need to deal with in executive session, but I'll answer questions about City Hall if you'd like, but I think after our meetings this week, you largely know what's going on in City Hall day-to-day.
Okay, are there any questions for our city manager?
I have one question. Have you determined a date and time, or a date for the decorating of the tree that was planted, the Christmas tree?
I have not, although I'm leaning towards the last Saturday in November. I believe it's somewhere around the 29th.
Okay. I just had gotten some questions and I wanted to...
That seems to be the date, that there's not a conflict with adjoining jurisdictions and tree lightings. It seems to be a weekend day after the Thanksgiving holiday, but before, we're too embedded into the holiday season in December. That seems to be the right vicinity, so that's where I am landing. I can tell you regretfully I didn't get to that today, but I'll try to put that one on the agenda for tomorrow to at least get a date firmed up.
I also wanted to recommend, and Linda, this may involve you, the Hopewell Middle School Chorus has offered their services if you're interested in having them come and sing when you do that lighting.
That would be better than me singing, so we will take that note.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, well, City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Also added by motion and vote, an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Do I have a motion in a second to adjourn into executive session to discuss pending litigation?
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, to be very clear, pending or potential litigation?
Pending or potential.
Okay.
Can we add land acquisitions to that also?
We can. We'll need to withdraw the second, redo the motion.
Who would that have seconded?
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Councilmember Thurman, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We've moved to executive session for pending potential litigation and land acquisition.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session for, to pass pending and potential litigation and land acquisition.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned into executive session, time 6:54.
Yeah, we did start at about 10 hours.
I gotta get you some more eggs, Jake, because I can't, I gotta have them done by four, because Mark's family's coming in from Royal National Stadium process. He's done by then.
All right. I'm gonna have a last story, I have to correct tomorrow. Retired.
What? Retired.
How you doing? Hey, so rusty.
Great. Oh, watch it. That was the one that was holding the other day.
Hey, I caught the line end.
I just went in there the other day.
Good.
She was just walking on. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Dennis, was it Dennis? She was going crazy with Dennis.
How you doing? You ready? Hey, I got, I got.
Sorry, I forgot that.
I got, I got clears.
Okay. I do have an extra one. I figured you'd want to get one. One of us has taken a shit about it.
What shows up as you?
Oh, he's not listening to my voice, how are you?
Good, how are you doing? Yeah, I thought it was you, and I said I don't recognize this voice.
Very good.
I'll be there. We have to turn. We'll talk. How you doing?
09. Okay, good luck, good mail. I know. Why does it do that around you?
You know why? It's the worst. Yeah, that's why the page. I can see whatever I want to say. Even have people sitting up there. A lot of NASA stuff this time. Okay, we'll see you guys.
Okay. Well, we and City Clerk go to ordinances and resolutions. Right there, seeking resolutions. No, this docket, go back. There. I think I did that. I think I did. All right, I'll have to get it later. Can't get it to the bottom. There it is. It's in the bottom, it should be like in the...
I'll do that anymore.
Thank you, babe. Yeah, 'cause it's the 11th month. That's where we get it.
Okay.
Cool. Hey, George?
Yes, ma'am.
Uncle, lock the door after you go out, won't you? One second. Play.
We gotta wait till this come back and turn, right? I'm done. This is it.
Okay. See you Friday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job. Good. It is, you know, there's always, there's always, there appears to be competition, challenging competition, and there's the work that's needed. I think that's a nice surprise. Actually, I was gonna give you the last month. I scheduled to, I scheduled to pocket this. Yeah, I'm not. Who'd you think I was? Younger than the last time I saw you, because you're not visiting the city side. That could be it. Thank you, thank you. What, have you got siblings? No, no, no. I think it's true. Not working hard. I know, I think we have to go. Yeah, okay. So I've got the picture from, from... Yes, I'm like all in one pool, including like last one, all the time. So I'm like, no, no, I still miss it all. So I go in to the confused, and occasional stuff just is running in, I still like that. Do you mind if we go to one place? Yeah. Do you live in Austin? I live in Austin, just maybe in your class, I'm always talking to you. More calls to you. You know, our offices, I work out with, I'm going in offices, I'm best friend with her, Jimmy Carter. There's a, there's a, there's a... Do you know where the local transport is? And the water guy? I got your water guy. It's a brand new company, and it's a building, and it's a, and it's a, and I have a brand new corner unit, it's a little less than ten minutes, but definitely, it's, it's... What's the land? Um, there's anything in the street to voice, to voice a different person. Sorry, I can't, I can't talk to them. Beautiful, like everyone's out there, where they're on the drive. I think more crosses, it's not, and it's all started working, and it's, I think, I think more crosses actually does. I think more crosses actually does. I know, that's what we said, I'm like, either, I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I'm,
Hey, George. Uncle lock the door after you go out, won't you, Uncle? What's that good for?
We got to wait until this come back and turn.
I'm done. This is it.
Yeah. Our office is... I've worked out with, I'm with an officer, best friend of mine, Jimmy Carter.
You know where the Morcross House is? And the water house?
Yeah.
I heard of the water house.
Okay.
It's a brand new house, it's a building, and it's on the... And I've got a brand new corner that's on the...
What's the line? I think Morcross is actually... Protection. Because black cats suffer during Halloween.
Matter of fact, most places, like I volunteer with cats, they're going to like shelter voluntarily. And they will not adopt out, like cats or orange cats, or white cats at all.
For what reason?
I've heard it's sacrificial. But I also learned it's not just, you know, the poor and the kids.
Well, this is what the story is. They found a cat and it's gone to a human in South Town. Someone tossed ass on a little black kid. And this, you know, at first they thought it was a newborn, because all the birds come, so they brought them to... Yeah, yeah. So this animal rescue group, Peach State Pets, something, something, and so I talked to them, you know, pet study in hospitals. And they said, yes, that happens to a black cat. And then, but then, as I asked around, I got, not everybody was solid on the black. Black people...
You might do research and find something, but I've heard that in years, and I know we specifically don't know, or we don't adopt that.
I specifically asked some people, do you know of examples of what, like, black cats being tortured or killed in the life of Halloween? It's like, it's almost, it's kind of like...
Almost like another legend.
Yes, and in fact, the animal, the land, the nature side of that, so...
That's better than know that. I've got the cat, I'm going to do it.
But yeah, I mean, I can't, like, an example.
Oh, yeah.
Because the lady said there were, like, several straws and...
See, I have, and I take care of animals at the department, and there's one little black kid, and I was like, what? She's like, yeah, to the smell. Like, I can wind it a little, you know, as far as we come. And then there's probably eight kittens at the dumpster, and most of them are black. So I'm worried about that. I was going to go eat them on Halloween night, but I don't want to pull them out of where they are. I want them just to hide. I know that the strays, these girls at my house, they come down, they're not at that porch, and I saw the mom, they just sit, they didn't come out. It's not like, I'm thinking there's no way they knew, but I guess just all commotion, and people running around, and making noise, and they hid it.
Feral cats and street cats, I think, you're hard to catch anyway. But you have just a black house cat, a yard, a black yard cat?
Yeah, it's part of the feral food.
Yeah, they, I mean, ones who are not quite tough, they, I think they would be dangerous.
Because they'll come out, yeah. You know, like, the kittens at the dumpsters, they'll come out, they must be, they hear my car, and it's funny, someone saw it, and they thought, they must be hungry, because they won't get near anybody, but I saw them run right into the car. I come up, and I'm at the gate, and they use my gate card, and they come out again.
Good, okay?
I'm doing well.
Sorry to interrupt. All right, I'm going to get with you sometimes, but we're not canceled.
They let you play with those controls? What happened to the mayor?
I moved to reconvene.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting reconvened.
Have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Seven oh eight.
Mayor, we're just playing with you, buddy.